Welcome to this evening's meeting of the Yukon City Council and the Yukon Municipal Authority Work Session. We're here in the council chambers in the Centennial Building at 12 South Fifth Street, Yukon, Oklahoma. And it is June 25th at 6:30 PM. We will be hearing from Frank Crawford, who will be presenting the Performator presentation from Crawford and Associates. Welcome Frank.
Thank you.
Thanks for joining us.
That was a great first stab at pronouncing that. Most of the time, everybody gets that wrong.
Butchers it pretty bad.
Perfo-meter, pre-formater, I've heard every kind of slang for it. So, thank you for carving out a little bit of time. And I noticed we have a couple of new faces, so I want to make sure we understand what we're talking about tonight. What I'm not talking about tonight is the audit, which you'll hear about later, 93 pages or 83 pages, or however long it was. The audit's a great thing, it's wonderful to have, but I don't know if you've ever read one, but they're not really designed to tell you what's going on in a understandable manner. And so, what we've done in the past is, since about 2015, is we take all of that information and we've developed a model about 25 years ago that reduces it down into something that everybody can understand, which is simply, on a scale of 1 to 10 or 0 to 10, how are we doing financially? It seems that everybody gets that concept. And so, we track that number, and we track how we got there, and then we put that report together so you can see it in the version of this Performator. So, I know, I don't know if you've got other items on the agenda for this work session, so I don't know how much time.
This is the only item on the agenda Frank.
All right, well then that means I can take as much time as I want. Let's go to page 5, and we'll talk about the overall score a little bit, and then I'll kind of talk a little bit about a handful of the different ratios that we look at, and we won't go through every page. So, the way this report is designed is it's pretty simple. There's three ways to read it. There's a graph or a picture usually on the left, there's a little bit of narrative on the right, and then for those of you that don't like either graphs or narratives, you can look down in the bottom right corner and you'll see a green, yellow, or red number, somewhere between 0 and 10. Red is not very good, yellow is okay, green is very good. And so, again, it's pretty simple to look at. So if you can see kind of what we've been tracking, the picture tells the story.
Can we get the slides advanced to page 5?
Oh, sorry, yeah.
No, you're fine.
So I forgot it was even up, so there we go.
Thank you.
You can notice back in 2015, the first time that we had a chance to look at the numbers, they were not very good. Anything below a 5 is what I would consider less than satisfactory, and that means you got a number of different issues that are going on. If you remember back in that time, there was quite a bit of controversy that was going on, and the city was unsure of where they were spending their money, and there was just a lot of controversy. So we had stepped in at that time, kind of got everything cleaned up. I think Jim came over as city manager back, took over, started a process where we knew we couldn't dig out of a hole in one day or one year because we had taken several years to dig into it. But as you can see, the graph shows you, you've kind of been digging out of it, and you've dug way out of it now to where you're now scoring up in the eights. 8 is a great score. Again, I said the scale is 0 to 10, but the realistic score is, there isn't a government that can score a 10 across the board, nor is there a government that can score a 0, although Puerto Rico is testing my 0 theory. They're as far close to a 0 as any government I've seen. The highest score I've ever seen in 25 years is a 9.1, and it's only happened three times out of, you know, hundreds of governments, so an 8 is extremely good. It's pretty close to where you were last year, I mean, one tenth of a point different, so that's just a little bit of a different mix. The 8 is made up of three components though, and you can see on the right, it's a little bit of the component is explained. I said this is kind of a picture of your financial health and success. Well, those are kind of two different things. Health is one thing, and then whether we had success or not is another, and then whether or not we can sustain that, or we have the capability to go forward is another, and that's why you see the number broken out into three components. And so, the way our 8 score breaks out is that we scored about a 6.6 on financial position, that's the health component. Again, above satisfactory, somewhere mid-satisfactory, what I consider to be above satisfactory. We nearly scored a perfect score on the six or five metrics on performance, which means that we had a great 12-month year that ended June 30, 2023. And our capability score actually jumped a little bit too, almost to a 7. It was hovering in the lower 6s, but we paid off a significant amount of debt during fiscal '23, and that basically allowed our capability or sustainability number to grow. And so, we scored pretty much the same score we did in the prior year, but the mix was different, and I'll show you kind of the mix of the scores from the prior year also. So again, overall, you know, pretty much relatively similar to the fiscal '22 year, 8 is a great score. And so now, I'll kind of walk you through maybe a handful of the ratios that I look at. And I think there's, you know, the way this is set up is, there'll be six or seven ratios that create the financial position number, there'll be five or six ratios that create the performance number, five or six ratios that create the capability score, and I'll kind of handpick two or three of each one to kind of walk you through. So let's start, first start with financial position, and the first ratio I want to point you to is a good one, which is slide 9, where we talk about the level of general fund, unassigned fund balance. Those are just fancy words for, after the year is over, how much is left over in the general fund? And again, I'll advance that to slide 9 for everybody. Basically, the way the math works is pretty simple. Our main operating fund for the city is the general fund, that's where the bulk of our tax revenue and grants and money goes into, and the bulk of our payroll and other expenses come out, that are all non-utility related. And so, it starts with a number at the beginning of the year, which we call beginning fund balance or carryover. It brings in new money, it spends money, and then math takes over and produces an ending number. And we try to measure that ending number based on how much revenue you're bringing in as a percentage. And so, as you look at this scale and the picture, you know, doesn't really do it justice, we have literally gone from less than 10% of fund balance 10 years ago to 48% fund balance. In other words, we could literally go half a year without collecting any revenue at all and still pay out all of our expenses for that half year. Now, of course, that would leave you with nothing, but again, that won't happen because obviously we continue to collect revenue every day, but the size of your carryover has grown dramatically, and now, again, scores a 10 on the ratio because it's so high. That ratio is, that number that the ratio represents is about 14 million, 14.2 million carryover. Again, that's 48% of your annual revenue stream typically, so that's great, but we also have an additional 6.5 million that the council has locked away via an ordinance related to restricted stabilization. In other words, we don't want to touch this other 6.5 million unless all heck's breaking loose. It's there for a rainy day, and it's got to be really, really raining before we're allowed to get into it. So that money, we don't even really count in the ratio. If we did, that ratio would jump to 70%. Again, that's a great money to be. Back in 2015, that stabilization reserve had been drained to 0. It was gone, along with most of all the other cash that was there, due to several years of basically spending more than we were collecting, and then kind of losing track of where we were in that process. So, a lot of recovery since 2015, and that is a big component of the city side, the general fund fund balance. Couple of other things I want to point out that are part of this. Flip to slide 10, and I'll show you the flip side of a ratio that's not so good. Here, we look at the remaining useful lives of your capital assets. When I say capital assets, I'm talking about buildings, machinery and equipment, roadways, literally anything that had a $5,000 original cost or more that has longer than one year of life. And we keep track of that stuff, and we measure how much life is left in those things. We like to see about half of the life left over, and of course, every year, the stuff gets older, but then we also buy new stuff, and so that ratio should be hovering around 50%, and we're hovering around 38%, and that's actually less than what it's been in the last year. And a few years, we had 37%, but we've not really done super well on this ratio, which simply means to me, without even knowing the condition of the capital assets, is that the roads are bumpy, the buildings are crumbling a little, you know, there's older equipment at play out there, and that's what that number represents, and I can see it just by looking at the numbers and not really looking at the buildings or the roads, because the numbers usually tell the story. And so, again, this is kind of a flip side. We could score a lot better on that if you went and took that 14 million that you have in reserve, and then you bought and spent that money on capital, then you'd see this number go up, but you'd see that number go down, and then they kind of offset. So it's kind of, you can't really trick the Performator, I mean, it keeps track of what you're doing, and basically, you can manipulate it a little bit, but you'll lose on one and gain on another. Slide 11, I'll talk about, just because this seems to be a topic of interest every year. We have our own non-uniformed employee pension plan. In other words, the fire and police pension systems are at the state level, and we participate in those, but we just make contributions based on what they tell us to contribute. We don't really manage the assets or anything. Here, we hire the Oklahoma Municipal Retirement Fund to have a non-uniformed employee pension system, and it seems like we've had a lot of interest in this about whether this is fully funded or not. And last year, we came close to being fully funded because we had super high investment returns a year ago for the pension system. In '23, we didn't have that great of a year, so it kind of flopped back down to normal. We're at, what, 84% funded right now. I'm not terribly concerned about this, even though I give you a 0 score, because my scale is very strict. I like to see these plans at least 95% funded to just get on the board with a number of satisfactory. And so, it's probably a little stricter than it ought to be, but again, I'm trying to measure, not whether the plan is successful, but whether or not there's a future demand on cash that you're going to have to play.
Do you quantify, Frank, do you quantify the difference between the 84% and 100%?
Yeah, your net pension liability is about 5.9 million.
Yeah.
In other words, if you were to basically take 5.9 million out of your 14 billion reserve and put that into the plan, the plan becomes fully funded, but then of course, you suffer a little bit on the ratio side. The good thing about this is, this isn't designed to fix itself overnight, it's one of those things where we contribute every year based on what their actuary tells us to contribute, and then that contribution plus the interest earnings of the investments will grow over the typical lifetime career of an employee, say 20 years, 25 years.
So if I'm reading that right, another 1.1 million fully funds it?
Yeah, true. If you had another 5.9 million, you would fully fund it.
Another 5.9?
Yes, 5.9 million on top of what it is right now, because as the ratio, as you look on the slide on the right side, at the very bottom, it says the city's net pension liability at the bottom is approximately 5.9 million. So, that means we could fully fund that with 5.9 million, but there's really no sense in doing that, because what's going to happen over this plan is, it's going to fully fund itself over a period of time. It's just not going to do it overnight.
The actuaries tell us that.
Absolutely. You have an actuary, OK, MRF has an actuary come in every year, they look at the plan and specifics, and they basically say, okay, everybody needs to contribute X amount this year per employee. As long as you contribute that amount, and they earn the interest that they think they're earning, that they're projecting that they're going to earn, it all works out. If they don't earn those interests on those investments, what'll happen is, you'll have an actuary come in next year and say, we have to kick your contributions up a little more. In other words, the plan's going to get the money it's going to get, it's just not going to get it overnight. So, I don't ever worry about this until it drops below 80% funding. I mean, a plan can sustain itself at 80% funding levels, as long as the size of the government employee base doesn't contract dramatically. So as long as we have, you know, 150, 200 employees that are in this, and it stays 150 to 200, then it's not a big deal. But if you were to have a riff and lay off 75 people, this becomes a problem, because now we won't have the contributions to go in of the remaining people to fund this, and so we would have to, we would have to kick something in. So, again, I'm probably a little more strict on the score here, but I just, I prefer to see you get up into the 90s before I'm going to give you any credit for it, but again, it's not as big of a deal as it looks like in the ratio. One other one, two other ones I want to look at are on slides 14 and 15, and these deal with cash flow. Your cash flows are excellent. The current ratio basically looks at it and says, hey, I've got cash and investments and receivables coming in, do I have at least $2 for every dollar that I owe out in the next month or so? You guys, instead of having a 2 to 1 ratio, had a $4.48 ratio to 1, which is, again, double what I would like to see, so you score a 10 here. And then on the next slide, on the quick ratio, same thing, except I don't count receivables or investments, I just look at cash and say, do you have enough cash to pay $1 to $1? And instead of $1 to $1, you have $2.63 to the dollar, which is, you know, nearly two and a half times more than what my ratio would require. So, let's flip to the next page, and you can kind of see a summary slide of the last five years of those ratios that produce your financial health score, the position score. Notice on the far right column, that's fiscal '23, and again, remember I said you had a 6.6, so that's the score at the bottom of that column, where you can kind of see the score of each of those ratios in that column. What did we score last year on health? We scored a 7.1. So technically, we were a little more healthy last year because of certain things. This year, a little bit less in health, but we actually made up for that score in the capability score, which we'll talk about a little bit later, because we took some of that cash that we had sitting around, and we paid off debt a little bit early, about 3.6 million, I think, that we paid off. So, and notice that last year's score was actually kind of an oddball, the 7.1. Normally, you are in the 6s most of the time. Again, last year, we had that super high pension ratio, and that kind of kicked the score up a little bit abnormally. So we're kind of back down to normal, where we normally hang position-wise, so in the mid-6s, that's pretty good. The next set of ratios deal with financial performance, and there are five of those, and those are the ones that you scored nearly a 10 across the board. I think you had a 9.8 all the way across, so maybe three 10s and a 9.5 and a 9.8. This, again, is looking at the 12-month performance from, you know, July 1 of '22 to June 30 of '23. First slide I'll look at is this one, the change in net position. That simply means, did we end the year with more stuff than we started the year with? When I say stuff, I mean cash, investments, receivables, things of value. Net position is simply assets minus liabilities, what we own minus what we owe. And as long as that number's climbing every year, I like that, and so the picture kind of shows you, we have been climbing out of that hole that we had created back in 2015, and that the growth this year, not as good as the prior year, but again, we had a lot of abnormalities in the prior year. We had a lot of grant money in the past couple of years that are one-time monies, but we still produced a nearly 9% growth, which is great. And that kind of gets you back down to your normal growth rates if you look at the previous years. '22 was just a really abnormal year. We had CARES money, we had ARPA money, we had all kinds of stuff happening, and we had still post-COVID impacts with sales and use tax that was just climbing like crazy. So, again, change in net position, excellent. If you'd had 10%, I would have gave you a 10 on it, but 9, 9.5 is great. Next slide, inter-period equity. This is one of those generational things that you hear. Who's paying for today's cost of services? Are we, the taxpayers and citizens, paying for it? Or are you borrowing money and passing on cost to future generations? Here, we're doing the opposite. We literally collect $1.15 in revenue for every $1 we pay out in service. So, that means we're not taxing the future generations, and we are returning the bulk of what we're collecting today into services today, but yet still leaving a little bit of cushion in order to build those reserves that we've had in the past. So, excellent score there. Again, little bit of an aberration in '22. The 1.15 looks much closer to the slides that you see prior to fiscal '22. BTA self-sufficiency, I'll cover this one very quick. BTA stands for business-type activities. It's a fancy word that we use to call your utility fund, you know, where we're kind of in the business to charge a fee to recover our costs of operations. And so, we like to see that we charge at least $1 in utility revenues for every $1 that it costs us to work the system. And that would, of course, just break us even. Well, we need to do better than break even, and we do here, and you can kind of see that basically for every $1 in utility expense that we pay out, we'd collect $1.37 in revenue.
When you guys do this analysis, Frank, as you know, we have significant transfers here in the city of Yukon between our BTA accounts that are held at Yukon Municipal Authority, and then the city of Yukon, which delivers some services in Arnold's camp, like, you know, streets might repair a street after a sewer job is done, or, you know, we have, so we have some of those, some of those activities happening in our general fund. Does this, is this analysis inclusive of that, or it's kind of outside of that scope of this?
It's basically outside of that. It shows what we're doing with that 137%. In other words, that 37 cents we're collecting, we're not sitting on it. We're transferring it over to the general fund to let them use it for some government services.
Yeah, a lot of it's for infrastructure that goes to service the utility customers.
Right. We're paying for our cost of utilities, but we're also putting some money away, we're also transferring money to the city so that the city may use it. Even though those are two separate legal entities, they're all under the same umbrella of authority. I mean, it's you guys.
Yes.
So, we kind of look at it as a whole thing, that's why I give you one score for the city as a whole, even though I could give you a score for the city, and I could give you a score for the utility side, but they're so intertwined, it makes no sense to do that.
Yep.
So, yeah, so this is why you see that ratio where it's at, because we need that, we need that excess in order to fully fund what we want to do on the city side.
Yep.
The next one I'm going to cover, which I usually don't because it looks so weird. Normally, I calculate how happy your revenue bond investors are with your ability to pay them back. In other words, people will buy your debt as long as they know they're going to get their money back. And normally, I like to see one and a half to maybe a two-times coverage, and we've always historically done that, as you can see in the past, but then all of a sudden this year, the coverage requirement jumped to 57 and a half times, and I was puzzled initially because I thought, well, that's got to be a mistake. Here's what happened. We still generated the same amount of revenue, but we don't have the debt service anymore because we paid off all that debt. We literally took 3.6 million and just paid it off.
Yeah, and additionally, you know, our 40-plus million of debt is fairly, it's stretched out pretty long-term into the 20, 30 time, you know?
Correct.
Goes out a couple of decades, so...
And again, that's actually debt we're using to fund governmental operations.
Yes.
This was the debt that we had used to fund utility, and it's literally down to 81,000 now.
Yep.
And that's all that's left, and it'll be paid off in fiscal '24, so this ratio actually will come out of your book from now on unless you issue more revenue-based debt in the utility authority. But right now, 81,000's all that's there.
Do you have a similar debt coverage in here that's related to the debt of the...
The city side, yeah. We'll get into the capability side here in just a bit. So, this just looked weird, you know, but again, great score, but again, this will, this will come out. Last one, I'll probably talk about also, because this one drives everything on the city side. We have two major streams of revenue. We have utility revenue on the utility side, and sales and use tax revenue on the city side. I watch both, we've already talked about the utility side, now let's look at sales tax. The chart says it all, you know, we've been on a tear lately. COVID was part of it. If you look at pre-COVID, you know, the two years pre-COVID, '19 and '20, you know, we were barely collecting sales tax and use tax that was equivalent to what we had the year before. Then all of a sudden, '21, we're up 7.4%, '22, we're up 12.4%, and '23, we're up nearly 5%. I had warned everybody last year that the double-digit sales and use tax increases are not going to sustain themselves going forward, but 5% still near perfect.
How do you think about this when you, when you look at it on a real basis rather than an inflation, you know?
Yeah.
Do you adjust for inflation in any of your metrics?
I don't yet, but I thought about doing it based on the past two years, if inflation was going to stay where it was, but it hasn't. I mean, we had a couple of years of 10% inflation, and that's probably part of that 12.4% that you see in '22. Since it kind of came back down, I'm not really adjusting for inflation, but inflation is a big part of it. So, I mean, if you were to inflation adjust these numbers, you would probably say, well, we're kind of...
Relatively flat.
Relatively flat, yeah.
Yep.
So, again, I think normally, if you, if you can get a 3% increase in sales and use tax, I'm happy with it and give you a decent score, but we've just been crazy for the last three years, but everybody, every city and town in Oklahoma nearly has been just on a tear, but it can't sustain itself. It's going to have to come back down at some point, I just don't, I don't know exactly when.
What is the growth rate on that?
I would, I would, to me, 3% is a good growth rate. 3% I think you can bank on, 5% is great. Double-digit is extraordinary, but you just can't get that very often, but 3 to 5% I'd be incredibly happy with. There are some places this year that '24 are running flat or a little behind '23, so I think what's happening is that we see people coming out of their houses and going places again and doing things and buying things in other places as opposed to being homebodies like they did in '21 and '22. So I think the impact of that is showing up now, but, and inflation, again, a big part of it. The last slide of that component is the summary slide, so you can kind of see where you've been the last five years. You've actually had five year, five really good years of performance. I mean, that's how we dug out of that hole back in 2015, is you had to have years that we were scoring in the 9s and 10s, and we have continued to do that. Last year, we did hit a 10 in fiscal '22, but again, that was one of the aberration years. Normally, we're in the lower 9s, so kind of back to normal now, although 9.8 is almost perfect, so happy with that one too. Last set of slides are, we call it financial capability, but that really means sustainability, you know, because once we've taxed the citizens beyond the point that we can tax them anymore, and once we've issued all the debt that we can issue and we can't borrow any more money, you're kind of capped out. You don't control the bulk of your revenue streams, you've issued maximum debt, and you've already hit your tax limit, you don't have a lot of room for growth and sustainability. So, I try to measure where we at, where we're at on that, and so, as long as we score above a 5 here, I'm happy, so the fact that we were close to a 7 makes me extremely happy, but I can pinpoint exactly what happened. Very quickly, the revenue dispersing slide basically just gives you an idea of which revenues we have direct control of as opposed to the ones that we don't control. And so, right now, we don't control 74% of our revenue streams. That's not great. We only control about 26.5%. Those are all the service fees like we charge for utilities and permits and licenses and things of that nature. The bulk of our revenue stream is no surprise. It's sales and use tax, grants, and other things like that. So, I don't score you very well here, but nobody in Oklahoma scores very well here because we're all heavily dependent on sales and use tax. It's not like Texas where we can just raise the property tax levy and use that operating property tax for operational purposes. We're not even allowed to levy a property tax unless we have GO bond debt. We can't use it for operations at all.
I have a question on page 24. It says the sales tax growth from 2022 to 2023.
Yes.
2022 is 12.4%.
Correct.
In the year for '23 was 48%, but it doesn't reflect that back here on this...
Uh, is that, that's 4.8% on slide 24?
Yeah.
Oh gosh, yeah, I left a decimal out, my bad. Sorry, not, that's, pencil a little, a little period in there, yeah, my bad. Not plus 48, plus 4.8.
The screen didn't reflect.
That's a good catch, man, that's, I'm glad you're, I'm glad you're looking at that.
He's available for forensic, for forensic services later.
He is available? I may hire him, because if you can catch something like that out of all these numbers, that's great. I, what I will do is I'll make an electronic copy with that period in there and send it back so you guys can have it, but, and then if we want new printed copies, we can do that too. Or you can just draw the pencil, you can draw the period in, that's okay. I don't really care. Good catch, I appreciate that. Last few slides, let me talk about debt service load, only because this reflects what happened with our debt. Here, I like to see how much of our non-capital budget is loaded with money to pay off debt. In other words, I don't like to see debt payments as a large part of your budget. Well, here, they're only 10% of our budget. That's great. I mean, last year, it was 18%, but remember, we paid off that debt early, therefore, I would have expected this to go down. It did go down, and it jumped the score quite a bit from where you were in the prior year. Our bonded debts per capita, here I measure basically debt per capita, per population, based on the 2020 census. Just kind of like to get an idea of whether the debt per capita is going up or down. Here, it's going down, simply because we're paying off the GO bond debt, and we're almost close to paying it off completely. It's, what, $57 per capita? That's, that's really low. And again, I'm not sure if you are talking or considering at some point maybe going And again, I'm not sure if you are talking or considering at some point maybe going out for a GO bond issue, but what you probably ought to consider is, once this debt gets to the final year of its payoff, you might want to approach the citizens about a new GO bond issue because literally their tax rate won't change very much because you're, they're already accustomed to paying a property tax.
Did you try that last year?
Oh, did you try it? Oh, gosh, well, I, I, that's not surprising. It's a, it's gotten to be a marketing deal, that if you market it well, it passes, and if you don't market it well, it doesn't. But anyway, we're close to one, one point five million of outstanding GO bonds left. That means it's, it's going to disappear here pretty quick, maybe two or three years. Our entire legal debt limit still remains, even though we have GO bond debt because we issue them under a different article of constitution, so it doesn't count against our ten percent net assessed value cap. So again, that's a huge avenue that you can go to if you need to, but again, does require voter approval. The, the property taxes per capita that we're levying is also a reflection of the amount of debt on the citizen's side. Notice that the graph kind of tells it all. We're down to twenty-eight bucks per capita. In other words, we have about a million four seventy-five in GO bonds outstanding. Had a million four seventy-five, and we have about twenty-eight dollars per capita of property taxes, which generated about six hundred ninety-two thousand, so that usually will pay off probably within the next two to two and a half years. And then, once those go down to zero, then you'll score tens on that ratio, so. And then lastly, I compare your sales tax rate. This is probably something I'm going to have to reconsider because when I set this model up twenty-five years ago, four percent was way high, and it was like the, the economic limit. Well, now four percent's the norm, so I probably am going to have to go back and kind of create maybe five percent or five and a half as the, as the high. I've got two communities in Oklahoma that have five point five percent local tax. That's as high as I've seen it, so I probably need to readjust this scale, but for now, I consider four point four to be a little less than satisfactory, but in reality, it's probably satisfactory, so I'm going to have to adjust this upwards, I think, in the next year. But again, that means you probably have a little more room to, to see whether the voters would pay an additional sales tax if you're needing to raise some funds. Probably a little bit more cap room than you've got based on my three point three scale number there. Lastly, you see the summary page for the sustainability side, and notice that typically we've been in the lower sixes, sustainability, and then jumped to the six-nine or almost a seven this year, but pretty much because of the one thing related to pay off of the debt. So all of that gets you back to slide five, which gets you to the overall score. And again, pretty consistent with the score we had last year, and not sure where we're going to end up in, in twenty-twenty-four, but we're going to be looking at it here pretty soon. And I usually wait until the auditors are done with their numbers because I don't want to build the ratios on a number that's wrong or needs to change or gets reclassified, so once we get that, we, we pretty much have the ability to.
What other mid-sized cities do you deliver the perform, performa?
Performer.
Performer. Which one, which other mid-sized cities in Oklahoma do you do this for?
Oh, gosh, you're right. Edmond, Broken Arrow, Ardmore, Ada, Yukon, here, Yukon, El Reno, McAllister, Durant. I could, I could rattle a dozen.
That's really, that's really helpful.
Yeah.
So I think as we think about benchmarking with public records.
And if I were to benchmark the eight, I would say it's in the upper, upper, upper tranche of those.
Upper quadrant of the.
Yes, absolutely. There are not many eights out there, and, and as I said earlier, extremely rare nines that don't happen very often, but anything in the eights, any, a high sevens is good.